We're going to call this repeating order to the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, August 26, 2014, in North Canton, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is to appoint a fiscal officer pro tem, Stephanie Cochran. Get a second.
I'll second.
Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes. Okay, before we have our agendas presented, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads? Do let the record reflect that trustee Giavasis and our superintendent, Mr. Joe Isino, have been excused from this evening's board meeting. Is there actually representing Plain Township over at a meeting in North Canton regarding the zimber ditch which we felt was pertinent? Do we have representation there? That being said, first item I have is the sheriff's report, and I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one I have on the agenda is speeding on End Row between 30th and 34th. And I believe in the audience, we have a Mr. Joe Ward, who, yes, would you like to address the ward and let them know your concerns? Yes. If you just want to stand and you can stay there and let him know, I've already said his name, Joe Ward. Your address for the record, and then just address the ward and our sheriff's representatives with your concern, please.
Okay. My concern is not only the speeding, but...
And can you give us our address just for our record?
Yes. 3005 Enroe Avenue Northeast, Canton High, 44705. And we have representatives here from Enroe that they would like to speak, you know, for a few moments.
Yeah, that's good. We'll have to, we'll have to address that during public...
Is that the, what's he has to be called?
I'll, 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 I'm an individual at this point, otherwise this is off the... Any remaining speakers are going to have to wait till our public's, public speech section of the meeting.
All right. We're concerned about all the speeding on Enroe, and it's brought about by mainly by the Walmart businesses there. We have not only Walmart, we have Harveys, Burger King, Taco Bell, Kentucky Fried, Rent a Home, and we have two new drag rooms, beer and wine, and a tobacco shop. And Enroe is the throughway to all of these businesses. And ever since they opened up here, it's deteriorating our street. As you know, Walmart is open 24/7. There's all type of noise. We get carts, we get debris, we get profanity, we get, you name it. And this goes on 24/7. So the sheriff was kind enough to put out the speeding machines to counter traffic and also to deter some of the speeding. But some, when they took the signs away, the speeding just escalated and continued. What our concern mainly is, as residents there, we've been there 30, 40 years. And we've seen, ever since Walmart has come into the area, we've seen gradually the whole street just deteriorate from so much traffic. And this traffic comes from all over northeast, south, and west. We are the only through street off 30th Street to Walmart. The only one. So we feel that, you know, as homeowners, we should be able to enjoy our property and not have it taken over, be taken over by these businesses. These businesses pay their taxes to the city of Canton. They do not pay any taxes to the township. We pay our taxes to the township, so we feel we should enjoy the township. We've been very fortunate, Mr. Isino and Mr. Falk, they work with us, and that's why we're here. Because we're trying to, as a group, take our street back over and enjoy our street and not have it taken over. We have so much noise at night, just numerous things. And if you'll tell us when each one of us can speak, I'm quite sure my neighbors here would like to address the problem individually with you. I didn't know that there was only one speaker, but everyone showed up.
Will we be able to speak?
In the public speaks, everybody will be able to speak. I just put one person on, a proportion of the sheriff's deputy, just in the sheriff's report, just in case our sheriffs get called out. That way they could hear the initial complaint and get it on record, because sometimes they get called away during the meeting. So under the public speaks, then everybody else can speak too. But I did want the sheriff deputies to hear.
We're in public speaking tonight?
Oh, yeah, we have the agenda.
It's part of the...
Yeah.
A lot of my friends and neighbors here, they're just, as they say, chomping at the bit to make...
Very good.
...make the... So that's our main concern, is the Walmart issue. We'd like the street closed at 34th Street there, and that way we wouldn't have a through street. We've actually have worked with, in the past, worked with the sheriff department, the fire department. They don't have any objection to it. And it greatly would help us, you know, tremendously with all this problems that we're starting to have.
I can address that issue, and I will, I'm Lisa Campbell, I'm the administrator. I will talk with Joe Isino tomorrow, and we will make some contacts, some phone calls, original planning, to see what we've done in the past, but I don't... And Denny will, will talk also. Do you think there's a possibility of that with the road? To vacate it, or if it's already cut through or no?
I'm afraid it'd probably be pretty difficult.
Okay.
I mean, you never know, but it'd probably be pretty difficult.
Okay. We'll still make an inquiry. We can still try to see if we can vacate it, meaning just what you asked, to have it closed there. I don't know, because it's already been, that's done before the road goes all the way through. We can still try. Did it help when the speed buggy was out there? Or not, not really? Okay.
Not really. The only thing that's going to help is like, like I said, our street is only through street to Walmart. It goes straight to Walmart. If we could not close it, even make it a one-way street or something to that effect, you know, we can work out something there to cut down on this traffic and everything, and the noise, and just everything.
Detective, can you address any issues?
Well, in regard to the speeding, would you allow cruisers to sit in your driveway to run radar?
We'll feed them, just.
Probably, yeah, a lot. And I'll, and I'll ask during the public speaks portion, when I get your addresses, the same question. You know, if you let a car sit in the driveway, sometimes if there's a car in the driveway instead of out in the road where everybody can see, it's a little less obvious. If you would be willing to do that, and we can forward that to our patrol units.
Certainly.
And as long as they have enough limitation that we can give them, you know, that, that might be a little more stealthier way to, to observe traffic violations.
Well, certainly, they can come anytime.
Okay. Is there any time of the day we could sit in the, in your driveway?
Oh, we...
Any time of the day?
Anytime.
Okay, very good.
Just let us know if we want to call for your phone.
And Mr. Ward, does Mr. Isino have your phone number?
Yes, he has.
Okay.
If we could, again, when I brought that up weeks ago, what we did for Firestone...
Yes.
You know, now we get persistent on the street where...
For drill.
That we're just going to drill it and drill it there to the point where these residents aren't going to know whether they're out there that...
Sure.
We'll have to treat that, where we have to be very persistent, like trustee Hoss is drilling, and just really work. We'd like to do it at all times of the day. And certain, did he, Mr. Ward, any certain days that are during the time that it's more speeders, or is it pretty much allowed?
No, it's 24/7.
Okay.
What Mr. Hawes and Mr. Delino are saying is, what we'll do is, we'll contact Lieutenant Springer from the sheriff's department, and we will actually pay for additional patrols, so they'll just be dedicated to that area for a bit of time to try to set the precedence that there's a strong presence on that road.
Of course.
And, and then hopefully help, you know, set that.
Okay.
So, so that way it's not taking the sheriff's officers who are working the entire township, so we can have somebody dedicated, you know, for different times, only on End Row. So that's what we'll do.
That would be fine, that would be a start, but as I said, the other residents here will, the public speaker will, partially will adjust other areas.
And that way they won't be called, only the other calls will just be dedicated to that route.
That'd be fine.
And if, like Mr. Delino said, if we mix up the times, then, you know, it's a reputation on that road of being one you want to stay away from, because there's always a sheriff there.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Detectives report, we have nothing. It's going to take us to unfinished business, Mrs. Campbell.
I got something to share. My name's Tim Kylie, I live on Firestone Avenue.
Oh, they put a face with the name.
They put a face with the name. It is, it helped for a month, and it's, it's bad again. The mornings, we have three kids that have to walk over 200 yards down Firestone. We get the bus. I talked to the school about moving the bus stop, and they said, "No, it's the sheriff's department to fix it. It's not our place to change the bus stop." The bus actually turns left and drives by my house. And they said, "No, they won't stop, it's the sheriff's department to enforce the speed on the road."
Did you speak with the transportation, with the bus garage?
Twice, last year and this year.
Let's have that communication on our, our end.
The morning is severely bad there. And quite honestly, you guys did sit in my driveway, it was spectacular. Out of 40 cars, they pulled over nine. They used 20 miles an hour over the speed limit as the threshold, though. So, I mean, that makes it okay to go 48 miles an hour on that road when it's a 30-mile road? Just, I mean, I just want to keep it fresh in your mind, let them know that it's, I mean, they weren't there as much this month as we've seen. They're sitting up at the top of the hill. The speed zone is from Big Springs to the top of the hill, so I appreciate everything you guys have done. All my neighbors have appreciated that they've noticed it, but it's still a struggle every day. I mean, I can send you videos and videos and videos of cars going... Saturday, we had a motorcycle race there, three motorcycles side by side, one up the road. And they're going to pave it, and when they pave it, it's going to be thousand times worse, because it's going to be nice and smooth and flat.
Look, I will email you tomorrow, I have your email. I don't think I have your phone number, and I'm going to work and make the communication with the school to see if there's anything I can do about that.
Yeah, it's two different schools, so, you know, one, Johnny Brown across the street's got to walk all the way down to Big Springs. My daughter, I won't, I don't let my kids walk down the road. I drive them, I'll drive my daughter to high school and then drive them, because I'm, my daughter, two years ago, almost got hit by a car, fell, had to take her to the hospital, and that's kind of why I'm passionate about...
I'll email you tomorrow, then we'll make phone contact, and you'll walk me through this.
Would love it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Back to unfinished business.
Okay. Item number one under unfinished business is to authorize the purchase and installation of the new generator. There's some technical terms in there, Mr. Talmadge. It's a 45-kilowatt, three-phase, 120, 208 volt, natural gas standby generator with 150A main circuit breaker from Abbott Electric. And to authorize payment from 01P, 02 not to exceed, here's the exciting part, $30,078.2.
Also move on unfinished business number one.
I'll second it.
From a discussion aspect, I do want to know one thing. I had a constituent that called, we exchanged voicemail messages, they had indicated, you know, concerned that we're going to expend $30,000 on a generator. You know, I was on record last meeting, I think along with fellow trustees here talking about, you know, disaster happens in the township, you know, you've got a central command. This individual had indicated in their message to me that, you know, with the new centralized fire station, that they felt, you know, command and everything would be handled out of there. I noted that the, this would be duly noted for the record, but there are a number of other functions and purposes for which this is being done, and Mrs. Campbell, I relayed that to you, so if you can just go ahead.
Yeah, I do have the chomp to get to that, because, number one, the price actually dropped $10,000. And I know $30,000 seems like a lot, but it is, it's something that we've worked on for well over a year to get the best price and the best way to do it. Number two, if we don't have this generator, nothing in the township works. Even though it's housed here, all essential operations of Plain Township government are housed in the township hall, meaning all network servers, all routers, and all switches. All phone lines and phone systems are housed here. So without that generator, without this building operating, then the fire departments, none of them, will have phone services, so you couldn't call the fire department. You couldn't email, they couldn't function without computers, phones, those types of services. There would be no email, no internet, and all point-to-point network infrastructure is housed here in the township hall. So it's critical. So, yes, from a safety service point, if there was a disaster, certainly, safety service-wise, people would, you know, filter through fire stations, but if the generator wasn't here, nothing would be working to keep up communications, to even answer the telephone. And the, even if it was, you know, a huge snowstorm, you couldn't call the road department, you couldn't call the fire department. People know this phone number, this is the first place that, you know, people make that phone call, but, you know, we've got to be up and running to let any of the safety services run, because again, everything's housed here. So I think that's probably just a misunderstanding, everybody just thinks, well, of course, go to the fire department, but they've got to be able to work.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
That wraps up unfinished business, nothing, or new business, fiscal officer's report, let's turn it over to Mrs. Cochran.
Thanks, Mr. Hawes. Number one for the fiscal officer's report is to approve the pending warrants in amount of $173,985.66.
Also move...
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Number two for the fiscal officer's report is to authorize the payment of regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
Also move authority to pay. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Number three for the fiscal officer is to authorize the payment for the following medical claims as provided by Alt Care.
Also move on fiscal office, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Number four is the financial report, and the investments and the percentages be the same as they did last month. Number five for the fiscal officer is to authorize the appropriation of funds in a total amount of $388,778.74. And this was because of the amended certificate that was passed last meeting, and additional revenue that the township had received.
Also move...
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number six is a resolution to authorize the following transfer fund.
Also move, second, discussion, please suggest to clarify the improvement of sites for the contracts for Fulton Storm. Bishop David Torrance's presence here last meeting, do we need to follow up with a subsequent letter, just noting?
I did follow up with a letter.
Okay.
Yes, and then you'll see that is the transfer for that storm relief, storm... We're all set now, and it's in a line item that says Fulton Storm.
Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number seven is a resolution to authorize the township board of trustees to approve the following agreement with Finley-Davies to complete the actuarial report. This is pursuant to the O R C Section 9.833 and to authorize payment from Fund 01A, 28E not to exceed the amount of $2,500.
I will sub move...
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that concludes fiscal.
Thank you, Mrs. Cochran. It's going to take us to our administrators' report, let's turn it over to Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is some news, is that the Star County Sheriff's Office is going to be holding another prescription drop-off program here at Plain Township on Saturday, September 27, from 10:00 to 2:00. And again, they take any unused prescription drugs, any pills, liquids, creams, no questions asked. You don't have to remove the label, they dispose of them. It's a safe way to dispose of any unused prescriptions, so they're not, you know, flushed, gotten, gotten into our waterways, or just left for some unforeseen time in your cupboards, and you wonder what to do with them. So it is a nice service, and it's hugely successful, and we're one of the largest drop-off locations. So a huge thanks to them for providing that to us. And then item number two is a resolution to approve the purchase of office furnishings for, from various vendors as part of the township hall renovations, and to authorize payments not to exceed $15,000 from Fund 01B, 05D.
Also move in issue number two, second, discussion, just next to do with the other.
Yeah, this, we have no quote yet, I can guarantee it will not be $15,000. It was just an estimated guess, it's for the renovations. The fiscal office, I know you all have been in there, but for anybody who hasn't been in the fiscal office, they don't even have real desks. They're working up of tables, and, and with all of the remodeling, I, I do know we need some desks, we need chairs, we need conference room furnishings. We won't be near that mark, but we just didn't want to have to come back again. But it's for an awful lot of offices, it's all the fiscal offices, it may be some zoning furnishings. It is for the conference room, yes. So we will be for a call.
Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
It includes the administrators' report, it's going to take us to the fire department, Chief Snyder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is amendment, resolution number 14-378, is for the warning systems, we talked about it last meeting. Just a change in the cap.
I will sub move...
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And item number two is again amendment, resolution number 14-377, for the personal warning appointment in fire stations.
Also, fire department two, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Item number three is the purchase, authorized purchase payment for tires, included your commercial tire, amount to see not $5,000. This is again for our E M S vehicles.
Okay, sub moved.
Second.
Discussion, how many E M S vehicles, list?
I believe there was two or three, we had some tires that we already had purchased earlier this year.
Okay.
And then, placed in some other, so, some by winter time, were in good shape for a couple months.
Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
And item number four is the first attempt of a mannequin for life support trainer, Maljory. I can see 4,500.
Also move on fire department four. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
And just to let the board know, that mannequin is a training mannequin that, you know, we now are certified by the state for a training site, and so we do a lot of in-house training, and this is again just a mannequin for our medical services to activate their skills and use them.
It's a pretty neat mannequin, chief, I mean, it's, it's life-size, it's got everything there. Is it the first one you have of this type?
It's the first one we have, yeah.
It's pretty neat.
We have parts and pieces.
Yeah.
We've used in the past, and they're starting to age and show wear and tear, so...
Yeah. And you can intubate this, you can do IVs, it's pretty...
Yeah, there's quite a few things you can do.
Yeah, pretty neat.
How heavy is this mannequin? Sub developed.
Quite simulates a 200-pound man. Pretty neat.
Pretty neat.
And item number five is to authorize reimbursement payment for Jonathan Hostov of about $400 for his health membership.
I will sub move...
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
And last, item number six is a request for tuition reimbursement to Rob Morgan. Offer is not to exceed $1,000.
Sub moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
It's all, thank you.
It's going to take us to the red department, now let's turn it over to Mrs. Campbell, we have a Mr. Isino who's excused.
Yes, I know we look an awful lot alike, so don't get confused. Road item number one is a resolution, so the board, if the board determines that property is no longer needed and the value is less than 2,500, the township has accumulated scrap metal and has established value less than 2,500, that it can scrap that, so that's what this resolution is for.
Sub moved, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Okay, item number two is a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the purchase of materials from Marlboro Supply for the sandalwood project, and also for miscellaneous projects not to exceed $2,111.80 from Fund 11-B-02A.
I will sub move...
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Okay, item number three is the Astor Ditch, and it's one of the first projects we did when I became administrator. I don't know if you recall, Julia and Chris Alsthouse coming in, Mr. Delino, and I'm not sure, Mr. Hawes, if you had been attending meetings back then, but you'll see the riprap that the, the road department had put in along, because I, I don't know if you recall, they brought in videos that when it would rain, it looked like Niagara Falls through there, and it was a huge, huge safety issue. Jeff Dutton, when he worked here, he engineered that catch basement, catch, catch basin. And what has happened is that it's been so long ago that that area, the ditch, has silted in, so it's not as effective, and what the road department needs to do is take the roads out, re-dig down that ditch, and then just put the riprap back in.
Will we be able to get, did you say it's on schedule before fall, or...
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, so this is just, yeah, this is just an informational about that Astor Ditch. Because there's, it's, it's labor, but it was a very, very dangerous situation. When it rains that hard, it really can pull a kid along into the, into that. So that's information about that Astor Ditch.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell.
And that ends the road department report.
It's going to take us to our zoning department, Mr. Falk.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one this evening is to set a public hearing for zoning amendment number 557, day 14. This public hearing will be set for September 9, which is our next meeting, can be held at 6:15. And this is a rezoning of a parcel on Mount Pleasant Street, Markless. This is just... Does this, does this, does this resolution? It was a resolution there to pass to set the public hearing. Which time is that?
I will sub move on zoning one. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two are nuisance amendments, we have six of them in front of you this evening.
I'm going to move on zoning two, A through F.
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And here, and finally, zoning number three is a resolution to hire a CRS contracting company to demolish a, a single-family home and unattached garage at 2301 26th Street Northeast. If you recall, we looked at this addition back in May, we did all the proper advertising, contacting, it's now time to hire a contractor, we had two separate quotes, this one at 5,500, from, in the, CR, I'm sorry, CRS is located in Plain Township, and the other price was for $8,200.
I'm going to move on zoning three. Second, from the discussion aspect, is this something that we can still pull in, other than moving Ohio forward? You know, that's, that's, okay.
Unfortunately, it's getting too late.
I just want to ask for a signature matching.
Right.
Roll call.
Mr. Delino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
That concludes zoning this evening, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Steibert for parks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one is just a recap on our community yards. That took place on August 16th. We had 39 vendors and 50 booths sold. It was a pretty successful day, so much so that we're looking at new ways to expand the program because we are just booked on the current space that we were using. So as, as details come, come to fruition, we'll let you know what they are.
I'll finish work by the table.
Thank you. Item number two is just in a public forum to let our folks know that we are applying for Ohio Department of Natural Resources grant to replace playground equipment at Alpine Park, which is our oldest park. The equipment was put there in the original development in 1995. It certainly served its use and long since served its use. But in, in effort not to purchase equipment with township funds as a self-sufficient park system, we are soliciting grants and we are in the process of completing that grant. We have put surveys both online on our website as well as our social media platforms to engage our public on what they'd like to see over there and have gotten some pretty fabulous response. So just to give you an update as to where we are on that. Last of the updates for the evening. Item number three, our very first PCS festival. I'll tell you what PCS stands for. It's Plain, Canton, and Stark Parks. We are doing a collaboration on Saturday, August, no, October. We're in August, October 11th. That would have been a little late for that notice. From 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Schneider Park will be our half of, of the project. The, the Stark Parks will be using the, the trail system and the Middle Branch Trail as a connector and it will run through Martindale, Ray Snyder, and Schreiber Parks in Canton as part of Plain Township's involvement. We'll have some food vendors. We'll be collaborating with North Canton YMCA on some activity. And we are really working hard and partnering with our very own fire department as it is Fire Prevention Week and they have secured some pretty interesting activities for both kids and park patrons alike. So chief, if I could turn it over to you, just kind of talk about what you're looking at.
Sure. Thanks, Rob. Yeah, Rob, I've met a couple times in the past month or so regarding the October 11th event and we're securing a, a safety house for kids who go through. Basically, it's a house the kids go through to show them, you know, smoke detectors, it has artificial smoke in it, you know, how to escape out of a home that's on fire, escape routes and that type of stuff. So it has numerous features within the house and we secured one of those houses for that event and all with doing some other activities, blood pressure taking and that type of stuff. Look forward to working with the parks owner.
Item number four is a resolution for the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize electrical work at Schneider Park to improve the electric receptacles there so we can have some different events, i.e. the supper market coming up in September and some others just like the PCS festival even, not this weekend, but next weekend's Park of Palooza.
I will submove.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Finally, park number five is a resolution for the Board of Trustees to certify Plain Township as deposit moneys into the fund, O1-B-02D. Amount of $62,680.32 to complete the Alpine Community Park Playground renovations. And the reason that is, is because we have to produce the money and we are reimbursed with the ODNR grant at that point. So while we are spending it initially, we get it back.
I'll submove.
Second.
Discussion.
Just so you know, this money came from estate tax funds, that's no tax dollars. So we just created a fund in the Alpine account and put it up with them.
Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
That concludes parks. Thanks, guys.
That's nothing other than the law director and as well, please let the record reflect it. The law director was excused for the seat.
Mary Hill, yes.
Communications. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you. I will shorten up any of the longer ones, but the first one is to Plain Township Board of Trustees from the Stark County Park Board and staff thanking the board for the use of the township hall on the evening of August 7th to conduct their park board meeting. Item number two, I will not shorten it as it reads, Dear Lisa. Thank you for expediting my request for permission to have an open fire and barricade cones for the July 19th Woodbrush Drive picnic. We so appreciate the efficiency and delivery and pickup of equipment. Unfortunately, we were rained out. Thank you also to our great road department, so vital in all the seasons, Mary Ann Cook. And then the next one we have was to Paul, our road foreman, saying, just wanted you to know how appreciative I am for your quick response for doing the asphalt curb in front of my house. We've always felt Plain does a first-rate job in maintaining our streets and snow removal. And that was from Tom Sterney. And the next one's really long, but again, very important as it reads, Dear Lisa. I never get thank you, so I won't read it all. But it is important. It is a thank you really to everybody here at Plain Township, from our trustees to our Chief Snyder, to Rob Steibert and his staff. All of our department heads were there. Detective Koenig, I can't thank you enough for putting this together. It was a thank you really for all of us coming together to put together the OVI Task Force on Safe Communities, for the Memorial Checkpoint and Drive Silver, Get Pulled Over kickoff event that was at our old fire station four. I think, I don't even need to read the thank you, I just, on behalf of everybody, thank you. It was a really nice event and I think it made quite a difference having Sandra Stanley, the lady who was actually killed by a seven-time drunk driver, Sandra Oldfield's family, there to speak of her and really puts a personal note on how lives can really be changed.
I think it's important to note too, quite frankly, what kind of, what, what activity come out of that because I know some of us have went to these checkpoints before, I think whatever was overall with Bull and Fulton, somewhat of quiet evening.
This was a huge one.
Quiet evening, but you know, just for the sake of anybody in the crowd, you know, activity, seven arrests for possession of marijuana and paraphernalia, two open containers, one contributing to the delinquency, and six OVI arrests. So these things are highly effective and it definitely takes a team, team effort. So you know, our sheriff's office, the guys were diligent.
Yes. And I know Detective Koenig, you, you were involved in really big.
Couple things.
Couple things there, so.
You did a good job.
Yeah, so thank you to everybody, really. And then we have one other one and it says, Dear Lisa, kidding, it says Dear Rob, which is like, what? On behalf of the Stark County Sheriff's, oh no, that's, that's the same one, verbatim. So really, it's, really it's Dear Lisa that says Dear Rob.
I just moved to your township. I think everybody worked hard and came together.
Yeah, everybody really did and it was, it was an amazing event. So that's the end of communications.
Okay, that's going to break, that is going to bring us to our section of meeting, public speech. Should you wish to address the Board of Trustees, we ask that you state your name and your address for the record. There is a three to the limit per individual. So if anybody wishes to address the board, gentlemen in the back.
My name is Dennis Rude. I live at 30, 41, 33rd Street. My property runs from 33rd to 34th on End Row. At one time, we had gone through the county to have End Row vacated and everything was approved.
It was.
Yes. Everything went through, everything was approved. Then they came and told me I would have to be held responsible for the main water line that runs down the middle of the street. Guess what? I can't afford that. My neighbor across the street can't afford that. But it was all approved. And I just made it stop right there because I can't afford that.
Danny, is that true about water lines on the street?
Well, it wouldn't be a street no longer, it'd be a yard.
Well.
That was probably, that it had to go through whoever the water was, probably City of Canton, as far as possibility of maintenance of that line is, is possible.
And no, I had to go through, I had to go through the county because it would hail Ken and Plain Township.
Yeah, all, all of those road vacations go through the county and the township would initiate a letter of support, but.
There'd have to be a public Giza of some sort in there for the utility.
Yeah. That's disheartening to hear, but we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at it.
We go out every day with a bucket and clean up the trash from Walmart and Burger King and McDonald's. Yeah, we get it worse than that, I think, on that corner. My neighbors can tell you. They see me out there every day picking up trash. And my neighbor across the street, he does have to do the same thing. Can we get water patrol?
Actually, through the, I mean, through the sheriff's office, there is a, there is a, there's a.
There are.
You're going to just have to push up.
They're going to try to force them to do it.
Outside the litter patrol, let's take the diligence and the time to get communications drafted and sent to each one of those businesses noting their disparity, disparity or inability to maintain and up kept presence in need be, I don't know how we push it, but I'm sure if any of us was living next to it, there's no way. Man, pick it up, probably for a little while, then it would sound like everybody is here.
I've been there for 18 years. Not bad to put up with it, so not bad to put it.
Until it got ended, we'll have, we'll have follow-up through the sheriff's office on the litter, litter patrol and as well the communications to businesses. Next individual, sorry. Next individual, I believe, Chris, you can end over here if you're stating your name and address.
My name is Martha R. Pass and I live at 3206 End Row. And I'm experiencing the same difficulties as picking up the trash. It's the grocery carts that they bring down from the stores and leave in your yard or in the front, in the street. It's the noise. And if it couldn't be dead-ended, why not make it one way and put speed pumps on it? Make it one way towards the store, that would get rid of the trash coming down our street. That would be north, one way going north. That would solve that problem.
If we walked on a way, Danny, can you help talk, talk at all that, do the joke? You said that has to do with the county, more so at the county level.
Right.
On traffic. It's not the township, you know, the first way we wanted, change it to one way. The user speed pumps though.
It's a very long block over there and it's flat.
I, I know when we, the problem with speed pumps and I, I wish, Joe would have that answer, so I don't want to say anything wrong.
Difficult, difficult.
Yeah, I know that the problem is with the plows in the winter. Because I know we've had neighbors request that before, but it's the difficulty with the plows in the winter, but I certainly will talk to Joe about that again because he's the expert, he's not here. But I know we've not done that throughout the township, but I mean, we'll investigate the one way.
I'm just thinking that's an alternative to the.
I know. Yeah. Yeah. We'll look at all those.
Thank you. And then there was a gentleman in the back, back row, second.
My name is Gilbert Doppler, 319 End Row. And the cars who come north on End Row come from Persburg Road or they come from Harmont. They come down Harmont, Middle Branch or whatever that street is, and they come all the way up to 30th Street to End Row, then go straight into Walworth. Same ones come back, they go this way and that way. And the whole, whole northeast end use that street. And they go straight down to Walworth, pull in on 34th Street, no stop signs or nothing, you know? Pull right in. But they don't do it. They come both ways, right down our street. And the only thing I think is going to correct the problem is put a barricade across 34th Street. That's the only thing, one way ain't going to do it either.
Then they'll drive through your yard.
Thank you. A gentleman here in front. Rob?
Hello. My name is Lester Schramm at 3463 Orion Street Northwest. I had two issues. First one, really simple, is the traffic going Orion Street between Cleveland Avenue and Pittsburgh. Early in the morning, this morning, about 10 minutes till 5, semis coming up down that street in the morning, hitting their Jake brakes, waking us up because they were running, he about ran into a garbage truck this morning. That's what it sounded like when I looked out, inches from the back of a garbage truck being of garbage. And then traffic, skeetin' traffic and garbage. I mean, I go out every day and pick up McDonald bags, cups, different stuff up there. I've talked to the sheriff department about it. My neighbors talked to the sheriff department. Might see a police car out there once a month, going up and down the road. Be nice if they're out there early in the morning and in the evenings when people get off work because that's when most of the issues are. The second problem I have, and we've talked to several people about this, I don't know if Dennis is aware of it, I don't know if the trustee's been made aware of it or not. We got a pond, a neighbor down in Berkey has a homemade pond. And the pond is not properly built and with an overflow or anything. And frankly, for him to put an overflow in, he'd have to put a transfer pump and everything else to get it up to the creek because he's the lowest piece of land in that. But the pond overflow's come across my neighbor's yard into my backyard and it's basically turned his back wooded area into a swamp. Now the mosquitoes are so bad out there, you can't do anything. I cannot go out and enjoy my yard for no reason. I went out to get rid of some tree limbs and a little brush pile that I had down back this morning and I had to get down there and drop the limb off and get out of there because the mosquitoes basically will swarm on you. We've tried talking to the neighbor about it. I went down several times, knocked on the door, they won't answer the door. He's talked to her. It's getting to the point now that she has fired weapons at his dogs. And as populated as that area is down there, that is not a place to be discharged in firearms. Because that, you've got houses in every direction, you've got businesses to the west. Now she's walking around the property with a sidearm on herself. There needs to be an ordinance passed against sidearms. First bullet, I'm a retired veteran, first bullet comes zitting by my head, I'm defending myself. And it, it's getting ridiculous over pond flowing that the simple solution is, is put an overflow in and they got to put a sump in, fine. They want the pond, they have a lot, we've talked to the health department because I'm finding dead birds on my property now. They supposedly come up, set up traps and everything, but I cannot tell, get an answer from the health department now if they've had the bird, if they've caught any birds or if they've been tested or anything else.
They, they would have, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. They would, and you can finish, I'm sorry. They would have called and let me know if they had caught any positive birds and they have not.
Okay.
But I know that they've been dropping the larva side, but if it continues, the problem is when it continues to stay wet, there's always going to be mosquitoes.
Right, but.
But they have dropped the larva side, they're continuing to do that, and then they did that field fog type of whole yard maintenance, but they'll, I'll just, they're going to continue to come out, the health department, but the main goal is to keep an area dry.
And the other problem is, the other day when we had two and three-quarter inches of downpour, Berkey has no proper drainage. It's all drained down Berkey, down that low area, then into their yard. There needs to be, if proper drains was put into Berkey, maybe that would help lessen the overflow of that pond, but without an over, proper overflow put in that pond, it's going to be a continued problem with this wet season, it's getting worse and worse and worse every year.
A couple of things to try to help tackle multiple, multiple points here. First, we can have Joe go out and take a look from a road drainage because once it gets to off-road drainage, typically that's either at the county level with the commissioners or private property owner dispute to which there's community mediation services to which can help talk and walk through these scenarios. And I've got, I've got a card here with not numbered, how that, how that would work. So on the first front, we can. So, on the first front, we can take a look from the township drainage aspect, what capacity we may be able to help positively impact that, but then for the community mediation, you know, that's really between the property, property owners will provide you with this information.
Well, the state, we have also contacted the state, Doug, Doug Rogers from the state health department, he says at this point it is considered a nuisance and it can be handled under Ohio revised code thirty-seven sixty-seven.
With the health department?
Because it is a nuisance, it's, he said it can, look, he, we went in, he read the one paragraph to me today from the Ohio revised code, he said that's all the trustees need to act on, they send a letter out saying, look, he needs to correct this overflow problem from his pond, if not, this is what's gonna happen. I guess there's a nuisance fund or something that can be used to help correct it.
I can tell you there's no, there's no nuisance funds, how nuisance get handled in the, in the township, at least when it comes to mowing down the lots and stuff, as we go in, we've made the property and the cost associated with that work then gets applied to the tax, the landowner's tax duplicate to which then they have, they have to pay, pay for. So Danny, are you able to speak to...
Not to, not to that code, no, I got to look that up tomorrow morning. I'm not sure whether thirty-seven sixty-seven.
Well, we're gonna follow, Danny's gonna follow directly with you on thirty-seven sixty-seven, so investigate, investigate that a little further because I don't wanna have any of us talk off the cuff and be misleading with any statements. Detective Koenig, are you able to just speak to the concerns of the firearm? I mean, township cannot pass a resolution to ban firearms.
Discharge firearms?
Discharge it unsafe and unclear, they have proper backstops and sure distances, but...
Were we called?
Yes.
When that occurred, and how long ago did that occur?
Wednesday, I believe the sheriff department came out, it happened last Monday around one o'clock.
Last Sunday?
Wednesday.
Last Wednesday.
Sir, if you would, would you just state your name and your address for the record as well?
Gerald Franklin, seven eight six eight Berkey Road Northwest. He was the water issue, but when the sheriff came out and I was talking to him, issue where she fired at my dog. He noticed the water running from the street, eight hours later after it rained, coming from the street into our yard. If the streets have proper drains, it will cut away from my neighbor's yards overflowing, causing, I have three hundred feet in my yard, it's a football field, that I can't even use because overflowed water from our pond. The mosquitoes are so bad, I can't use my pool, I can really cut my grass, I have my own show dogs, I can't even take out in my own yard because the mosquitoes are so bad.
That's where we're gonna have Joe, this is road supervisor, he is simply not here because of a huge flooding drainage meeting that's going on over in North Canton. Don't follow with...
Yeah, but in regard to the shooting at dogs and, you know, I can look into that a little further and see what the outcome was because this is the first I've heard of it, so I don't know what the circumstances or what the outcome was at the time, I can...
Well, she, I believe it's because of the breed of dog I have. She's scared of my breed.
What's to that?
She has...
He has...
I have a neighbor's Staffordshire Terrier, AKC registered grand champion. You know, I have, some of my dogs are rated in the top ten in the country, like I put my life into my dogs, they're not, I don't, my dogs aren't aggressive, you can ask my neighbors.
Well, we're both disabled veterans, it's therapies for us, I show dogs also, it's therapy for us.
Right.
You know, the dogs wouldn't harm Flea, his dogs nor my dogs, I mean, three of my dogs are registered therapy dogs. You know, I go to, I used to go to Akron Canton Children's Hospital with my dogs. I don't have any Staffordshire Terriers, I got German, German Schwerer, Pooner, Chihuahua, and Rottweiler. You know, what a mixture, but, you know, they're, they're very obedient dogs, they're not gonna hurt anybody. My dogs are never loose, you know, it's, they're fenced in area, everything, he has electric fence, but unfortunately, the electric fence don't work as good when it rains is the way it's been doing.
I can look into that incident further once I'm able to.
Is she, because she video taken my dog, walking by her fence to my fence. Dog, well, she says she wasn't being aggressive toward, she was, she wasn't fearing for her life. She walks in her house to get a camera to videotape my dog, then she comes out and shoots the dog, calls the sheriff's department, says my dog comes on her property.
So she's, she's the last thing that's the dog charged her?
No, she, I guess it's, I went down to the sheriff's department on sixty-seven Rock Two where the jail is, I talked to them, they said she has a video of my dog just walking around wagging her tail. She said, I guess they changed the aggression law where she, she walked into her house and got a pistol, it came back out and shot at the dog.
Right, self-defense law is what she's quoting.
I'll have to pull that report and look at the circumstances and see what, I can't even give you an answer not looking at the report. But I can give to... Yeah, if you hang on after words, I'll give you my card.
Okay. And I'll give you the mediation card. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, we'll follow up, as noted, on the record, the gentleman in the far back left corner.
Good evening, name is Chris Ridalia, address two-two-one-zero fifty-fifth Street Northeast. Here tonight, just to kinda address some concerns about flooding that we've had, I've been at the home nine years, actually bought it from family, they've had flooding concerns as well. Our major concern is, I know obviously there's been some more rainfall, but the storm sewers aren't holding the water, they're actually overflowing. We've had water in the house, obviously one time when the storm was very bad, that you guys were kind enough to put the dumpsters down there, we had some loss then, but last August, we had a severe flood back to our yard, had ruined much of our pool. Had that fixed in May, and then as of June sixteenth, we had another rain, flooded it full of dirt, had to completely dump it, new liner. Since then, we had another storm. On the August eleventh, hit the, hit the backyard, flooded the backyard, flooded the barn. I've had some neighbors that are gonna come with pictures and video that they've kinda been out there sourcing up. It's actually ruined the pool again, where we have to have it drained, so it's getting very costly. Not sure if we need to build sod barricades in the front of their yards and try to redo our driveways, or is anything in the works on fixing the drainage, basically from the hill coming down fifty-fifth, right around Aspen Valley into the Linford area? Our yards, we sit on the, we sit on a hill basically, or at the, at the kinda middle bottom of the hill, and the driveways go down and our backyard's flooded, so any kind of decent rain, it's not a major rain, it's not a big flash flood, you have the yards in the back just completely filled with water. And I know a lot of other residents and neighbors of mine are concerned as well. One left because the road department head wasn't here and I felt like it was, it was important to stay here and kinda address the concerns, and they're, they're willing to come back, we've got pictures and videos, anything that, that we can do, because I know you guys always can't be there to see it actually happen. That's, that's our issue.
Did you say you're in the Linford neighborhood?
Well, in the old days, it was called Dunlow Estates, so we are on the south side of Fifty-Fifth Street. Basically, a little bit west of the, up three houses to the, to the east of Linford.
And the neighbors behind me and to the left and right of me are also addressing the same issues. And give me your address one more time?
It's twenty-two-ten...
Twenty-two-ten...
Fifty-Fifth Street. Northeast. We were in contact with Paul Burke last August, we were having dialogue, him and my wife, and then she kinda brought up the point that Canton City had kinda understood that there was an issue and they redid all the drains and the storm sewers and the catch basins right after Plain Township ends on Fifty-Fifth, right by Rice's Nursery. But we had the contact kinda ended after that, we had not heard any more response from them.
Rice, Rice's all the way up through...
On the back property line of Linford Avenue, where people live on Linford, the back property there, along the east, along the west, Fifty-Fifth Street is the city, that's the main on the street and south.
Pretend you know Joe's married, he's been pressing. An issue with that, just here basically on the road elevation, how water's been rerouted. I don't think we have a meet, I don't have an immediate answer for you, to put more catch basins in, I can tell you it's not gonna be the immediate, mediator of the long-term fix. Is Joe, is Joe responding to...
I just sent him a text to see if he could answer that, do you know, would, yeah. If you could stay after the meeting, if I could get your name and number, I'm trying to text him in the middle of the meeting he's at, but...
That's fine.
Typically he'll answer, I know that during the flooding, he did meet with our township engineer, I'm not sure if that's one of the areas, I know that we have an ongoing application through the Ohio Public Works Commission for a grant towards a Linford area for flooding.
Right.
We haven't received it yet, but it's an application we keep applying for. Um... It is a couple million dollar project, that's why we apply for OPWC funding for it. Let me get your name and phone number for the meeting, and Joe and I will touch base with you tomorrow. Of all nights, we sent him to another flood meeting.
Well, I think the last meeting was like two weeks ago, and we had got rain on the Monday night that hit us again, and it was, and it was actually so dark that night when it happened, we couldn't take pictures and videos, but we've gotten from the past, and so I felt it was important to get here and address the concerns. I know there's not always tons of money floating around, but anything that we can kinda do, help resolve it.
Okay.
So I'll stay after.
Yeah, stay after and let me get some information from you.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Bill Sonja, I live at thirty-twenty-seven Endro, and I was just wondering if something could be said to Walmart about patrolling for these grocery carts? Because I mean, it's not just on our street, it, they're just all over the neighborhoods. I mean, you drive through there and that's all you see, grocery carts all over the place. And as far as putting a cruiser on the street, they've done that before, and soon as they turn the corner and see the cruiser, they slow down, then as soon as the cruiser's gone, it's just right back to what it used to be.
Unfortunately though, that's the sheriff's office and up, and we, it's gonna happen no matter where it is in the township, whether it's off of Fox and Fire Club, Patty's talking about whether it's Peachmont up in Bobb, Bobbaling, whether it's Stretchy, Easton, it's one of those things where you try to drive awareness, but unfortunately, we contract for a total of four, is it fifteen deputies, Lisa?
Yes.
So we typically three or four on the road, and, you know, geographically, we're still the largest township in the county, and I think even still the most populated, given the million, one, two, five, six million dollars we expend, you know?
Try to be proactive.
We try, we try to be as proactive as, as we can, and the sheriff's office has always been really accommodating to any, any requests, because what happens, this detective Koenig will allude to, you know, they can put a message out through all their shift, I call them shift commanders, I forget what the proper names are, the sergeants, but when the guys come in for their shift, hey, we need to keep an eye out for Blue Chevy Cruz, we need to watch his section for speed, for speeding and so forth. They're diligent about it, I mean, it's not just hammer, hammer notes, it's something that can flag, flag in the system as, as well, so, you know, outside of concentrating, some efforts for a period of time, and then step, stepping away, obviously it's gonna spike, but then you come back, you know, in some manner to where it's not an established pattern, but where we can...
Get through and, yeah, just, you know, let all the shift guards know of what's going on and make everybody aware that we can get through that.
Gentleman at the back right corner.
I live at thirty-fourty, Thirty-third Street, my name is Kyle Erber, I have the same issues everybody else does. The sheriff's department sits in my driveway, I have a fenced-in backyard with a gate that goes through my driveway, I seen him sitting out there, half hour, didn't get nobody. I went out there, I told him, if you wanna sit in my driveway, because there's a gate, nobody can see you coming up and down the street, you sit there, in ten minutes, you'll have, you'll have somebody. He backed in there, wasn't even a minute later, forty-seven to twenty-five, no seatbelt, got the guy. Gave his ticket, comes back, pulls back from the driveway, not even a minute later, got another one. We got four people in a half an hour. Putting officers there is not gonna solve the problem.
They can see.
As soon as they leave, they see. You guys put those boards out there, they say you're going thirty-five miles an hour, thirty-sevens, you know what they do? They try to see how fast they can get that shit. One guy had seventy, I have a four-year-old and a five-year-old at my house. Seventy and twenty-five, they're gonna die if he's out in the street. Close the road, there's no reason...
Unfortunately, it's easier said than done, no.
What do we need to do to get it closed?
And that's what Mrs. Campbell's gonna, Mr. Paul's gonna work through, there's some things at the county, at the county level, I mean, once the infrastructure's created and so forth, I think there's one of the gentleman that was sitting in the crowd, he said to earlier, at the county level, they, they almost had it to the point where it can be vacated, but then all the utility maintenance costs, because it becomes vacated, it becomes private prop, private property, whereas the governmental entities are responsible, or the, let's say the service delivery entities such as like sanitation or water are responsible for it to your curb, well, now that that's all private property, that all becomes your, your cost.
I understand that.
Your cost, so that's really tight, what I've heard from earlier prohibited, so to revisit that situation, we're gonna talk through the county commissioners, we'll talk with, you know, the engineer from up, and be regional planning, probably Danny, because regional planning's the one that reviews the roadways, how they tie in, what can be vacated and so forth.
I have another issue with the, the water problem, covering the back of Walmart's parking lot, the water flows right down the street, right into my front yard, if it rains, it's a lake. Is there a way we can get a curb put here around the front of the property, so that wouldn't happen?
An asphalt curb.
Around the, around the, the front of your property?
Yeah, they started to, to couple of neighbors across the street, but now it like, it's like a river coming down the street, because it doesn't go into this yard or this yard, it comes right into mine.
What's your address?
Mine's thirty-fourty Thirty-third Street.
Asphalt curb, we'll have Joe, I see, he's a road supervisor, is that here?
Yeah.
So forth. He can learn to...
This is never...
He can take a look at asphalt curb, asphalt curbing, because there are areas throughout the township where, depending upon how the water, water flows and so forth.
And will you use the address of the meeting to get your number too?
Yeah.
The easiest, the most effective...
There's a drainway to the corner, there's two right there, so they just, the water ran over town, but whatever the time was, I got gravel, we had mine in front yard. We don't have curbs.
Joe, please, please will Paul get your contact information, so Joe can follow. Do we, do we have anybody else? Or you know what, just Ashley, the lady, lady here, high up the left.
All right. My name is Kathy, K-T-H-Y, Boyd, B-O-Y-D. My address is thirty-oh-eight Endro. I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I have the exact same problem. The carts, you know, Walmart said they were gonna patrol the, the lot when they first started, and I haven't seen a patrol in there for I don't know how long, I don't, you know, whoever, the security or whatever. They take their carts, they leave them in front of all of our homes, time after time after time. I live across from the wards, the corner, I'm opposite corner of you guys, the corner is so much trash every day, because they're stopping at the stop sign, I suppose, and I, I guess that's a convenient time to throw it out. The noise, all time tonight, I'm not getting younger, I don't know about anybody else, but my parents bought that home forty years ago. I took it over thirty years ago, so the changes are tremendous. All the, all the business, new businesses there, there are a few more that Mr. Ward didn't mention, like the shoe department, Sally's, you know, it's just never ending, uh, two more drive-throughs now. So it, you know, I'm just frustrated, that's all, I'm just frustrated. And, and, and to, I know I heard everything you said, but to close that street off would be a godsend, because it feels like we're living on a highway thoroughfare. thoroughfare. The, the, the speed limit may as well be 55. It's a long block, it's straight, level, good for speeding. When my son was a little boy, my neighbors had a sign put out, they had two little boys, had a sign put out, slow, children playing. I feel sorry for a child playing out there now, because it's, you know, there's no sidewalks, so the kids play in the grass, and they might go out, they could actually play in the street. But now, when I pull out of my driveway, I back out of my driveway, not only do I have to catch the cars flying from one, from the right, I have to worry about the cars coming around 30th Street on two wheels, and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to back out of my driveway. So, you know, you can hear my frustration, I'm sure, but thank you for listening, and I hope you could do something about it.
You know why I'm here.
Wait, did we address everybody on Endro?
You want to talk? Come on.
Hi, I'm Sherri Kessler, and I live at 3201 Endro Avenue Northeast, and I really agree with everything they're talking about, the barricades, not only with the speed and everything, we have a lot of theft and that at night. I mean, they ripped out there at that shoe store, chasing guys right down through our backyards, money bags all over the place. I mean, people are going to actually, that, that's going to be it, the way it's going, and I know the crime goes on all over, but we also have the Wild West in the bar, right around the corner, and I could have worked very, very early, hours in the morning, so I usually, when they're coming out, they're coming out the bad way, and that's an easy way for them to get out. And you should see them flying down early in the morning. And it's, it's like a getaway, and you got to also worry about these kids, you know, getting off the bus, you know, coming, walking up and down the street there, you know, they're not on a sidewalk, they're on the side of a road, you know, and these people has no respect for them. I really worry about the kids too, in general. Thank you for listening.
All right, can I just clarify before we move on? Did it, I think Mr. Hawes and I didn't mean to interrupt, was going to ask, are there any other Endro people? And I interrupted. Okay, I just want to make sure that I have my list, and just add, because I don't want to miss anything, for the staff and the trustees, is that we are going to contact the sheriff's department, and we are going to have patrols that are going to sit in, in, in homes, and these are going to be dedicated for patrol, not all the time, but we are going to add some dedicated patrols to your road. We're going to, Danny, I, and the trustees are going to look into the possibility of the vacating, the one-way, I'll ask Joe about speed bumps, and, and then the letters to the businesses. Am I missing anything that we discussed? Okay. Sorry.
Thanks for summarizing that. Okay. Go ahead, proceed. If you want to get David Anderson for the record.
I'm going to build a room, and our business is 1900, you live on New York, that's Kent, Ohio. Many of you know about this, we've been dealing with this issue of the ongoing junk garage sale in the parking lot next quarter, our party center. We've been doing this for seven years, and everybody just keeps saying, we're working on it, we're working on it. We came to you people, that two weeks ago, we came here, we left here thinking and hoping that we finally got through to somebody and something's going to be done. Then we find out that Ms. Curatello has now applied for a transient vendor permit to have an ongoing garage junk sale in the front parking lot. The only thing that we accomplished, if we even accomplished that, was getting a pile of asphalt under removed from there, and maybe one other thing, some trash. Go ahead.
It's not yet.
Sorry.
It's not like we're fired.
It was timed, it was timed, it was timed, right? Go ahead.
I just cannot stress this enough, this problem. Our business, in seven years' time, Plain Township zoning has been dealing with this for seven years. There's no excuse of why this hasn't been settled long before now. I don't care if the courts are sleeping, this should have been done before seven years is over with. But now should we try to do it long-term? Our business, seven years ago, did $400,000 a year. We're below $100,000 now, and within another year, we're going to be bankrupt, if somebody doesn't do something about this. But all I'm hearing is, we're working on it, and it's stuck in the magistrate's hands, and she's going to have picky tables. No, this was, this was a hearing aid office. Even if the occupancy permit was for an office, it doesn't allow for an ongoing junk sale in a parking lot, constantly.
Mr. Falk, can you address first the transient vendor thing that has been brought up here?
Yes, Mrs. Curatello has applied for a transient permit for outside sales on the property. She is in a V1 zone district. She is in the process, last I heard, of getting a license, first of all, a vendor's license from the state of Ohio, which would be a requirement for application to our township. Part of the issue, and I, I can't address Mr. Weaver's statement that the, it's been an ongoing garage sale for extended periods of time, that I believe about, first it generated itself as a property a month ago, I believe, that I hadn't noticed outside sale before. But, well, again, get back to the immediate issue. She has applied, she is working through the state of Ohio for a vendor's license, which again, would, would permit this, a transient vendor, is a temporary use permit for a period of time for outside sale.
She's got a per, I mean, that's permanent residence, is she get?
Well, it's not, it's not a residence, it's, it's a.
Well, it's a permanent business, business zone, so essentially what, I, you should say, they already drawn a conclusion that a temporary transient vendor, she can continue to reapply for, reapply for, and they're going to have, continue to have this issue?
No, no, transient vendor license is good for 90 days, and it would be permissible to be renewed once per year. Now, part of the issue that, I have to be careful how I say this, because we are in litigation at this, at this time, does deal with a container that was on her property that we did take her to court for. There was a court order, and she is in violation of the court order to remove the container. And this is the ongoing issue right now with, with the courts, as far as methods to eliminate the goods in that container, and then to get the container off-site. And again, we are, we have requested the magistrate to schedule a show cause hearing in order to make a determination as to whether or not this would be a permissible part of the action to eliminate, remove the container in a box trucked onto the property. So there's some things that are largely out of our control at this point in time, because it is a matter of litigation in court right now. So, and I believe part of that is the contention of Ms. Curatello that the items do have value, and again, that's, that's something, and we have gone over this in detail with Mr. Williams, as to where we stand on this item right now. I think a lot of the outside sale issue will hopefully be determined when we do get the show cause hearing from, from the magistrate, all what to do with the, with the property.
So given the, or the current litigation and so forth, are we able to keep, keep a stay or hold on any transient vendor application?
Mr. Williams and I do not believe we keep. That's the best time. I would bet the fact that our, our desires to have the magistrate put a very definitive timeframe on the sale of the goods from the container, and we believe at that point in time, that would help alleviate the situation.
But at the five figure time, still may.
A short, a short period of time, we were hoping for. It's a.
I know that Mr. Williams was prostrated that it was taking a long time.
Right, it's a very, it's a very difficult issue.
Years, years.
I mean, right now with the, the court process.
But that, that particular case was filed in 2012.
That's correct.
2012, two years ago, and nothing has been done.
And we don't control the speed at which the.
I understand that, but what I'm trying to get through to you is this, Ms. Curatello has never, never, never followed through with and, and complied with everything. She's been in both the containers, the tractor trailers, all this stuff, zoning's been after her for more than seven years. She's never been in compliance. Why would you even think that she would be now? Why would you even consider another permit when you have all these people complaining about this ongoing mess that's destroying our businesses? Why would you even consider giving her another permit?
What, what is the risk that I'm asking out of not knowing, if she wasn't given a transient permit, what happens? Is there, is there a risk to the township, or, and that may be a question for Eric, who's not here?
Yeah, I believe that's it, because, you know, in, in following the transient vendor Home Rule Resolution as stated, she, she is following, essentially, she almost has to get the permit before she can, she can be in violation of it. It's kind of a, it's a catch 22.
Isn't that true? The logic, you got to get it.
Well, we don't, well, the question is, is she, unfortunately, our zoning resolution does not address outside sales, flea markets, that type of thing. And that's something that, again, Mr. Williams and I plan to look at, but at this point in time, we don't address them. If you wanted to have a flea market on your property, sir, you could, as far as our zoning resolution right now, because you are in a V1 district. It could happen. We don't have in our resolution, anything that addresses that. And as such, it makes it very difficult for us to enforce or not enforce. So we attempt to do that through the transient vendor issue, which is technically not a zoning issue, it's a Home Rule Resolution. We have been, given over the past years, the, where we're following is to issue these licenses. Now, Mr. Williams and I are working to take a look, to see what we can do with it right now.
What's the time, what's the timetable?
Has she already applied?
She has, she has applied, and her initial application, she's a vendor license from the state of Ohio, the copy was submitted, it was determined that that vendor's license was not valid. Because of the, because of the, yeah, the hearing aid business, that type of thing, and also, but then, at that point in time, she is, as I stated before, in the process of applying to the state for a state vendor's license.
How long does that take?
Probably two weeks, and as far as my understanding, it takes about two weeks.
And our, and the transient vendor is a Home Rule?
Yeah. Does that mean? He's going to have to go back before those.
No, no, it's a Home Rule.
It's a Home Rule Resolution.
Home Rule Resolution.
Yeah, the, the, the resolution needs to be addressed.
Let's get to Eric.
I'll work with Eric on that tomorrow, or Paul Ricard if Eric's out. I'll talk to you after.
I would appreciate that. It's also been brought to my attention that Ms. Curatello has filed a complaint about us for not having a parking for our party center, so it's turning into a big bean contest. Patty.
I am Patty Carpenter, and our business is located at the Golden Gallery at 1922 Whipple Avenue Northwest in Canton, and we have given Bill's colonnade room permission for years to use our entire parking, and I would be happiest to allow for that.
So there's no question of where it complies with, okay? And we respectfully request that somebody do something. We really need help, okay? Is there anybody else? Public speaks to address the board. It's getting close to public speech, it's going to take us to concerns of trustees. Concerns of the fiscal officer, who's excused, takes us to approval of the minutes for August 12, 2014, also move.
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes. Going to make a motion that we adjourn at 7:26 PM.
Seconded.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.